I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed.
Look at that.
Well, I see it.
I'm sorry.
This is the Lord's Prayer. Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roca.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Markot.
Here.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter. Councilmember DeeDee Johnson Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Dahl.
Here.
First item is public comment. Do we have any comment cards? At this time, we'll ask you to put your phone on silent. We'll move on to item two A. Madam Clerk.
Acceptance of the minutes, regular meeting of November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, which were published on November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
I need a motion. It's removed. Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas. Is there any discussion on our November nineteenth meeting minutes? Hearing seen none. Please vote your machines. Thank you. Three A.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four thirty-one and ordinance enlarging the boundaries of the city of New Iberia, Louisiana, and amending the charter of the city of New Iberia.
This is our annexation of that thirteen acres for the residential development. We have a motion by Councilman Dan Dahl and a second by Councilman Marlon Lewis. Is there anyone from the public to comment on this item? Hearing and seen none. Please vote your machines.
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and Councilwoman Brooke Markot. Thank you. Now we move on to the main motion. I need one.
So moved.
Councilwoman Brooke Markot and Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed. Is there any discussion on the main motion? Hearing seen none. Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Three D.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four thirty-two and ordinance amending approved budget allocations for American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the city of New Iberia.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Marlon Lewis and Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing seen none. I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and Councilman Marlon Lewis. Now we need a main motion.
Motion.
Councilwoman Brooke Markot, Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed. Is there any discussion? And this is the restroom. This is adjusting our budget for the restroom renovations, which are long overdue at both of the gyms. It's the last piece of the puzzle of the gym, something we've wanted to get done. So that's what this is.
So does this include Bank Street?
It does. It does. So it's both the community centers and Bank Street Park.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page.
So Mayor, the scope has worked. It's been done. I mean, the bids are not going to go out yet.
We can.
Yes, there's something.
Come on up, Dave. A little rundown of what we're doing. If you don't mind.
How much are we going to spend, David?
Uh, four seventy-eight thousand.
Total, four hundred seventy-eight thousand. So it's going to break down to about the eighty thousand at Bank Park.
Yeah.
And then the rest of the money is divided between each.
So we're out to bid right now. We're accepting bids on Tuesday.
And when do you think they could be accepting and work could be done? Do they have a time period?
To actually start the work? Uh, I mean, usually about six to eight weeks. So probably around the beginning of the new year. Definitely get rolling.
We need to accept and issue our contract.
We're going to do the work in phases. So like every facility, we have to have some restrooms open.
Yeah.
So like at the MLK Center, we're going to do one bank of them, male, female, in the back, keep the fronts open and reverse. And then similar at the Seer Gates.
But we do have a function in.
Yeah.
Well, look, it's stacked up. We have a lot of functions.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have a sprinkler system going at Seer Gates, too. I mean, we realize we're going to have to be the traffic cop, but that's a good problem to have. Anybody else?
Could always advert.
Yes, sir.
Could always use portables, you know, some kind of, if you had to, you know?
Yeah. If we have to, if something's big enough.
Yeah.
We might have to. Anybody else?
In a tux?
Well, an air-conditioned one. Anything else, then please vote your machines. Thank you very much. This is exciting. This is something we've been waiting on a long time. Uh, three C.
Special ordinance number twenty twenty-four twenty-five oh-two and ordinance amending the budget to reflect carryovers from fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas, Councilman Marlon Lewis. Any public comment on this item? No takers? Uh, need a motion to close.
Motion.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed and Councilman Marlon Lewis. Now we move on to the main motion.
Motion.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas, Councilwoman Brooke Markot. Is there any discussion on this item? Am I good? Then please vote your machines. Thank you. Four A, Madam Clerk.
Resolution number twenty-four one fifty-four, a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement with Bayard Habits and Associates for general engineering services.
These are some small projects that we think are coming. We have a couple of really small ones, so I'd like to have a contract in place with a rate, with a cap, so we can just execute them. In the past, there were times with some of the engineering firms, we were kind of backpedaling to catch up. I don't want to have that. So this gives us, if something small comes up besides the road program, there are some other areas that we're hoping to do some small repairs that might not be in the big road program bids. This will be an easy way to handle that. I wish we had had this, you know, the last road program.
But this is just like little small things that's outside of the main project.
Yes. Yes. The main project, they already have their contract. They're working on it. We should be out to bid for February for the first big road program of the seventeen point one million. It's coming. It's just taken, you know, a while to do the engineering, but this is separate and apart from that.
So give me an example of the small project.
We have an area on Front Street that's holding water. Okay, it's a weird little thing that we have to fix. They went out there, didn't charge us anything, kind of looked at some shots, marked up the street, looked at what we could do. We brought Public Works and we realized this is too complicated. We not, it's just not something in our capacity.
Okay.
That would be an example of them saying, okay, let's do that as a little small project.
Okay, cool.
And we have some of those all over town. There's been some areas where roads don't transition as well as we would have wanted between the old and what's left. Well, they've already done what they needed to do for the road program. So some of those, at a later date, we could come back and or go a little further. Maybe so. Yeah, there's a bunch of them. So all those little things that we really didn't have a way to make the contractor do anything because he meant the specs of the job. So just those kind of little cleanup things.
Okay.
Yes.
So Mayor, they broke it down, how much they charge per hour and everything else. Do we have a cap on the amount for the year or it's just endless?
I don't want it to be endless. So we, you approve this, I'm going to have some kind of cap because I think it does have a cap, though, actually. Does it?
Five thousand.
It says the total cost of five thousand.
Five thousand, yeah. It's just a small little bit of projects.
Okay.
And I'll come back to you. I'd rather do it like that in small increments and then I'll come back to the council if I want to do it again. Let's see how it works.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Anybody else? Then if there's nothing further, please vote your machines. Oh, I didn't do a motion? Sorry. We started talking. Hold the thought. Clear the machine. I need a motion.
Motion.
Councilman David Broussard and Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed. No further discussion. Please vote your machines. Thank you all. We got excited. Four B.
Resolution number twenty-four one fifty-five, a resolution awarding contract to E and L Construction Group LLC for the American Rescue Plan Act Hopkins Street Gateway Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Councilman Marlon Lewis and Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed. This is our gateway project. David's up to tell us about it.
Good evening. So last Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, we took bids on the Hopkins Street Gateway Project. This is an ARPA-funded project, one of our final ones to complete. E and L Construction Group was the low bidder and the amount, well, we're going to have a contract amount for two hundred ninety-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three and thirty-three cents. And so what we did was we took their base bid. We went to accept the first alternate. And then we did some value engineering on that first alternate to reduce it back into budget. So that was a reduction. We had eighteen signs that we were going to place throughout the West End Cultural District. And with the expansion of the cultural district and like double the size of it, we have a lot of area, a lot of intersections we want to cover. So this should give a good indication of the boundaries of the district. And then, so we took off three of those signs. So they're vertical sign, they're about two feet wide by about eight feet tall, ten feet tall.
You don't have a image we can look at? Okay.
Talk about something else.
Oh.
Uh, and so we have eighteen, well, sorry, we're going to have fifteen of these small vertical signs that go throughout the district. And then when you come over the road tracks on the Dore property, we're going to have a large sign there. And then we're working on another location, kind of coming from the opposite way, coming from Jefferson, uh, well, from Alado.
Well, yeah, Alado.
We have to find a good spot, but it's a nice, large sign, has a bit more presence than the smaller ones.
Okay.
And these are all fabricated out aluminum, automotive paint on them, so they got a good ten-year or more color retention. They've been engineered, foundations, all that, the whole nine yards. So we have.
Is it going to be on the Dore property?
Since we own the property, we're going to, we have a little corner where we have a little proposed park and we're going to have to just pick something, you know, we're going to stay away from the construction side for the clinic we're trying to get, you know, we're still working on that. So it's kind of on the opposite end so that we don't mess up, you know, the future plans. But the property's big and I think we can find a good spot for it.
Right when you come over those road tracks, you'll see.
You definitely want to see it, right? That's a perfect spot for it.
It is. It is.
Into the neighborhood.
Right.
But that side of the property is where a little park would be that doesn't mess up the, we have to protect the trees.
Right.
So because of the requirements of the donation, it's just a good spot to tuck it.
Okay.
Mayor, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
David, I guess you feel comfortable, the base bid was like seventy-three thousand dollars low and the alternates were pretty close. You don't see, I mean.
So, um, that's a matter of, and we talked with the contractors about that. One company was going to self-contract the concrete work and the other one was going to sub it out. And they just got a better price.
I was just wondering because the base, the alternates are pretty close.
Yeah.
The base bid was pretty.
Yeah, that's what it came down to.
Yeah, that's why. Okay.
Yeah. And we've already gotten with the contractors, see who's going to fabricate it. And it's a company in town, so it's a local company that's going to do the fabrication. Rather than contractors doing most of the paperwork on their end because this is pretty much a turnkey sign project. But these sign companies don't have the capability of public bidding, so they go through a contractor.
Okay.
So this is the, the signs are going to, are going to be placed on the, these are the large one. We have two of them.
What's the dimension of those approximately?
Uh, it's about fourteen feet wide by about, each letter is about three feet tall.
Yeah, I wanted to get the scale of it. It's big.
It could be lit?
You know.
Not lit, but it's going to be vibrant paint, so it's got some good illumination. No, yeah, there's no electric or anything on the project.
So like the size of this desk, you know?
Yeah. So people could literally go stand there and take pictures.
Right. Just like the new Iberia sign that we have downtown, which I see people burning that thing up. I think the same thing will happen here.
And then these are the vertical signs.
Okay.
Yeah, it is.
That's really nice. That's beautiful.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, David.
Very happy. Thank you.
Thank you, lady. Everybody good? Then please vote your machines. Thank you. Four C.
Resolution number twenty-four one fifty-six, a resolution awarding contract to Iberia Aggregates and Construction Materials LLC for the American Rescue Plan Act major drainage cleanout project, Area C, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
This is the third of our canal cleaning, that huge drainage project that we're spending a million dollars. We got one more to go and it bids in a week because we have to make the deadline. So we can talk about it after we get a motion. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
Second, Councilman Dan Dahl and Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas. Uh, so that's what the project is. It's the third phase. The second phase is starting. We got this one bid and then we'll have one more because again, it's ARPA. We have to have this money wrapped up by the end of the year.
Okay, so, um. Okay, so I know that they've been working on, like I saw where they have been working on the canal on Anne Street, but the trees are still there. I mean, big trees.
I don't think they finished. I mean, we can, you know.
I haven't seen them in a while, so I'm like, I know these trees can't be going to be left in this canal because that's not serving our purpose. I mean, the whole point was to get them out of there.
Right.
So I almost took a picture to send it to you, say, what's up? But I figured this was going to be on the agenda. We could talk about it.
I'll check on it tomorrow, but I know he's just getting started. He has a lot left.
Okay.
Uh, but I will make sure. And I mean, they did such a bang-up job on the.
I know. That's why I'm like, okay, why are these trees still here?
I think they just in process.
Okay. I mean, I even talked to the parish and told them that that one was being cleaned and we would love for them to clean their side so that the water would flow properly.
Yeah.
So hopefully.
And we are doing a map to send them. We, y'all had requested that, so I do have a map coming that the engineer's working on to where we will be able to give that to the parish and say, okay, you know, heads up, this is everything that should be moving more water.
Okay.
Yes.
So the first phase, we voted on substantial completion for the first phase, right?
Yeah, the first one's done. The second one's under construction.
No, we just, we approved the second one, right?
No, this is the third one.
This is the third.
The third, the third, the third.
And then we have one more. I got a cram to get one more. Remember, we did it in four.
That's right.
Uh, we took a million dollars, divided it in four and said we.
Cause Anne Street, the one you're talking about is on second one, I remember now.
Yes, it is. It's in B. Yeah.
So it's just getting started, but I will make sure.
Yeah, trees got to go.
Yes, I agree.
And so which one is this, Area C?
This is Area C. And Area C is, and I'm my engineer here.
Yeah, well, that's the lane that we're going down at the park.
It kind of started by you went around and my, where I'm as the last one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, but I wanted to give you the, you know, exact boundaries.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
But it's your district. Anybody else? We good? Then please vote your machines and Brooke will get you an answer.
Thank you.
No, it's not a problem.
Uh, Main Street between Bayou Tashan, La Rue de Riviere, sure. Uh, Rue Royale, Sandalwood and Bayard, L two D two.
Yeah, that's the one that goes to the bay.
Not my area.
No, no, it's not. Yeah, because we did, so we did yours first, but I thought there was a little bit in yours. So it's actually.
It's, I think it's District Four.
Yes.
Yeah, that's District Four.
Cause it's crossing the tracks on the Ford to come across by where I live, T-Biu, and so it's coming around the backside.
You're right. Okay.
Did the one around Colleen Street ever get cleaned out, do you know? And I don't think that's part of this project, though. I think that's something that our Public Works can take care of.
Okay, I will check on it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
I know, I know I saw it got turned in, but I will have to check on that.
Okay.
See if it's gotten done yet.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else on that? Are we on drainage? Everybody good? Uh, now we move into four D.
Resolution number twenty-four one fifty-seven, a resolution authorizing the mayor to act on behalf of the city of New Iberia in all matters pertaining to state project number H zero one two two nine five, FAP number H zero one two two nine five, LA one eighty-two, New Iberia sidewalks.
Okay, do we?
I don't think, I didn't know if they voted.
I don't think we did. I think, I think you're right. Thank you, thank you. Four C, we made a motion. We had a big discussion. We didn't vote.
Yeah.
That's on me.
No, I just.
You loaded it up, ready to go?
I voted.
Yeah, we voted.
Yeah, I thought we didn't.
No, no, we voted.
Okay, I mean, we were talking about it. I'm sorry. Okay, we good.
So we voted.
Yeah, we voted.
Okay, just making sure.
I put a little check, so we voted.
I got a check and that's how I try to keep track, but I, you know, hey, look, I messed up like everybody else. Okay, so.
Now you got to read it all over again.
Okay. Let's go to four D.
Resolution number twenty-four one fifty-seven, a resolution authorizing the mayor to act on behalf of the city of New Iberia in all matters pertaining to state project number H zero one two two nine five, FAP number H zero two two nine five, LA one eighty-two, New Iberia sidewalks, Iberia Parish, and further authorizing the mayor to sign any and all documents, contracts and agreements in connection therewith.
These are new sidewalks coming downtown that the state had promised us seven years ago. Well, really almost eight now, right when I got in office. So, hey, they got some paperwork they want us to do. Believe me, I'm on it.
So is this just Main Street? They're not going to.
It's Main and St. Peter. Someone's St. Peter, someone's Main. And I've never seen the plan yet. This is some paperwork that we need to send to them and then I'll be getting that next.
Can they do the drainage on Main Street as well?
I think they just doing sidewalks and I think we lucky to get sidewalks.
That drainage issue is bad.
You talking about right by mesh or whatever?
No, but there, but also on Main Street. I mean.
Right as you drive by from here.
Yeah, exactly.
The reason why I mentioned, it looks like some of it has been alleviated over the last couple of years, though. I haven't.
It's gotten better, but we still have some problem areas that the state has not addressed.
Right.
St. Peter and Bank floods all the time. St. Peter, I'm sorry, Main and right there at center. And then a little further down Main, another area that just floods. I mean, it's terrible. Every time there's a hard rain.
The bank's terrible.
Yeah.
St. Peter and Bank.
Oh, that is terrible. Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to pull this back in so we don't get all messed up. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and Councilman Marlon Lewis. Now you can talk about whatever y'all want. I'm just trying to keep up. Anyway, but these, I'm excited about this. These were promised to the city a long time ago, so it's really neat that, it looks like it's coming. Any questions or comments on the sidewalks? Am I good?
When you meet with them, ask them about the drainage.
I will, I will. It's not the same people, but I will.
These are repairing sidewalks?
These are new sidewalks.
New sidewalks? Where we don't have sidewalks?
No, no.
Oh, I think we finally going to get rid of those disco nineteen seventy urban renewal sidewalks with the washed gravel, which gets really slick when it's wet.
Okay.
Those were put in in the seventies when we did an urban renewal project, a kind of project impact to kind of compete with malls and box, big boxes. They, if you go look, I mean, there's a lot of areas, they're damaged, there's a lot of area cracks.
Yep.
The washed gravel is kind of cool, but it does get really slick. So they're going to be taking those up. We also don't have, in many areas, that we totally meet ADA.
I was going to say.
We've gotten Public Works over the years to come and kind of crack curbs and put ramps, but we not up to par. So the main driving force of this is not the disco sidewalks. It's the fact that we don't meet ADA.
Yeah.
So with the state being willing to do this, we went all the way around. We get some more modern sidewalks, we meet ADA. If you look, they've been very, I kind of like them, but they've been very difficult to patch over the years. We kind of lost the, the first, the city did all of that. We kind of lost the employees who could do that washed gravel. And so they've been patched over the years and it just doesn't, it doesn't blend, you know, so moving on. Anybody else?
So, um, do you think, and I know this is a little off topic, but do you think they're going to redo the sidewalks on Hopkins Street? Because they're not ADA compliant either.
Well, we getting some new sidewalks. Uh, I met with the contractor this week and I've got more information coming on that.
Okay.
With the road being ripped up and the new drainage and all of that, we are going to get some sidewalks. And when we get those sidewalks, they will build them to ADA.
Okay, good.
I don't know if it's the whole of Hopkins Street, but everything that gets ripped up.
Okay.
It's a start. Anything else? Then please vote your machines. Thank you. Four E.
Resolution number twenty-four one fifty-eight, a resolution approving change order number four for the American Rescue Plan Act upgrades to Steamboat Pavilion Pavilion Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman David Broussard and Councilwoman Brooke Markot, this is more time?
Yeah, just more time to get the contract time up to date on where we are. So this is the rain delays and festival delays for September, October and November. And then we had a little bit of time where we had to do some verification on some plumbing, well, our property so that they can route some plumbing and not impede on the neighboring property. So this just brings the contract to January sixth for substantial completion. The project is about eighty-five percent complete. They're like really.
The last month, they have kicked it. I mean, I'm impressed.
They're working about eighteen-hour days.
I'm impressed.
This contract, this has been over a year, huh?
It has, it has.
It's about.
But the new superintendent, okay, on, on Facebook, okay, the world of Facebook, they put all kind of craziness that we fired the contractor and had to rebid it and it cost us all kind, none of that's true, okay? But what is true is, he's a nice guy, but the first superintendent, it never, the project never got going. He couldn't get out the mud. There was a lot of delays and just not a lot of aggressive construction activity. All right, the superintendent is there now, that dude gets, gets the star. He, he has changed the whole course of that job and pulled that company out of heading in the wrong direction. So it really is coming out good. The work's good. The progress is amazing lately. So, you know, whether they make any money or not, I would say no. I've been a contractor for forty years. I mean, it just, their overhead's running. They just took too long. But the guy we got out there now, he's, he's the man.
So when you think the completion, David?
I'm still hoping for the beginning of January. I mean, at this rate, they got a little bit of brickwork to do, uh, some final electrical lights to install. And then they're going to move on to the inside of the bathrooms, paint the walls, do the flooring, that kind of stuff. So it really shouldn't take that much longer, I think, to get substantial completion. All the railings are done.
So when you think they're going to open the street?
Well, the Fulton Street is open sometimes. I mean, they have to get, with the brickwork, they have to move pallets around. So they had to shut the road down, but they're instructing, we'll remind them, we have a meeting tomorrow to try to open the road up as much as possible on Fulton. to try to open the road up as much as possible on Fulton. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, we don't wanna inconvenience them and limit them, but at the same time, we don't wanna do the same for the city.
It had been open and cleaned up and then the brickwork, and we don't wanna put a brick through a windshield. The brickwork really, you know, out of safety, necessitated closing the road again.
Yeah. And all this brick, I don't know if y'all knew this, but this brick came from the original warehouse that was on the site.
I saved it.
Oh, yeah, I probably saved it years ago.
You helped me.
Yeah, so we were able to reclaim it. Public Works brought all the pallets.
It's true.
Back to the site and they've been installing that brick.
That's excellent.
Yeah, it's pretty cool history.
Yeah.
That's a good story to tell.
They were trying to make a parking lot out of it.
Hey, they were gonna make, they were gonna make a parking lot or sell it. And so I got, it's just funny, I got my construction crew, I got Public Works, although I wasn't the mayor, okay? I would shoot somebody if they did that now, okay? So we got Public Works, we got my crews, we got materials that we will name, remain anonymous where I got the material, and we shored up all the walls and came to the council meeting and they said, okay, we demo in the building. And I had pictures and said, well, no we not, it's all safe now, cause we had a sugarcane festival coming. And so we voted not to demo it, and so we didn't demo it, and then like, what are you gonna do now? And then we figured out a way and there was a little money in the budget and we, you know, uh.
I thought I mean, first time me and you voted together.
I was, yeah, and after that, well, we just clicked. We were like, man, what we been doing? But we, uh, moved to get that, the first part of that building built, and I mean, it's just, it's just part of the community. I mean, so much of our functions happened there. But in the process, we had all these bricks and so we made Public Works save the bricks. And I hunted them down. When we were picking out bricks, I said, man, I know I got some bricks somewhere, and they were in the weeds, but we found them.
That's awesome.
Just kinda neat.
I made a third vote on that.
Yeah, you were there too, you were there too.
Need to write a book.
You were there way before them, huh? Same time.
Cool. Any other comments or questions? And please vote your machines. Thank y'all. Thank y'all. Forgot about that, Dave.
That was them good saving that wall.
Oh, yeah? Moving on to five A.
Introduction of Special Ordinance Number twenty-two-four twenty-two-five oh three, an ordinance amending the budget to replace New Iberia Police Department radios and purchase two additional vehicles and setting for public hearing on December seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Councilman Dan Dahl and I don't know who got it on this side, uh, Councilwoman Brooke Markott. This is our radios, uh, I know we have some PD people in the back, we got two of our captains here. Our radios are the original radios and they're giving us a lot of trouble. And we're out of a maintenance contract and they don't wanna warranty them and they don't even really wanna fix them. So what we've negotiated is a new contract, we're buying new radios, and for seven years, they just swap the radio out. If we have problems, we just get another radio. But, you know, uh, my two captains can tell you, if you wanna hear from them, just how i- it's not safe. It's really gotten to a point that our people are complaining, they, uh, it, it's, it's become an issue, you know, uh. So, anyway, but that's, that's what this is, and then we saw an opportunity. We had cut down, that we only buying five new cars and that's not enough, you know, we need to stay at seven or eight a year to keep our fleet where it needs to be. And so we're gonna be able to buy two additional cars in addition to the radios.
So are we leasing the radios or we're buying them?
We're, we're contracting, we're buying them, and in the deal, we have a seven-year swap-out agreement, but they're I ra- our radios.
Okay.
So we are buying them. And we bid them through, gonna bid them through all the right, you know.
That's my question.
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So, so you finished it?
Well, I was just gonna ask one more question, so.
And they're on state contract, but, yes.
Are you, are the other ones gonna be surplus? I mean, what are we gonna do with the ones that we have today?
Throw them in a bin. No, I, I mean, maybe if some, you know, what we do with a lot of stuff is we package it up and we normally do find, we tell them there's problems, but we do try to find a smaller agency that maybe could use them, but they, they, they're really giving a lot of trouble. I don't know if they're safe to do that.
Okay.
I mean, I wanna replace them as quick as we can, but that'll be an option. Yes, sir.
So my question, and I looked at the contract, I'm very familiar with the radios, cause I use them in my business, but, um, I'm fully aware we need new radios from what they, what the issue is ordering, but we do have a local contractor that provides radios in town to the fire department. And we went to state, they both have state contracts. So tell me how we bid state contract. Why don't we give others the opportunity to bid locally?
Yeah, we publicize it, we.
I only seen one bid from Motorola, is what I saw.
Yes, sir. Come on up.
I'm, I'm asking, because I know, I know the Kentwood models are significantly cheaper than Motorola and they do the same thing. So I'm looking at the two hundred eighty-three thousand and seeing where, you know, possibly if there was two bids out there, maybe we could've saved the fire, the police department a little, some money.
The Kentwoods are a lot cheaper than the Motorolas, but our dispatch center, which were hooked to the Elwin Tower, which is Motorola, and the one point something million y'all spent on the dispatch center, when we moved it here, is Motorola. So Motorola works with Motorola. That's kinda where we at, we kinda stuck.
Kentwood and Motorola interface together, but that's what I was told, but. So why, why don't we, why, but I'm just saying, why didn't, why, so we can't bid somebody else if, I'm asking, what state contract, we just go to one bid, Motorola?
I think they put it out and nobody.
So just one, one person entertained the bid?
Just like our cameras, but basically all of our systems are Motorola. And we have really good warranties, we have really good, you know, we look not only at the price, you have to look at the price, but if they're on state contract, you know, we got a sweet deal that for seven years, they'll just swap out the radio.
Motorola's program is you pay six hundred dollars for additional warranty. Kentwood, you get three years warranty with the radio purchase. So you, you paying for the additional warranty with Motorola.
Right, but I got seven years, I don't have to worry about it.
No, no, that's right, you could, the same, Kentwood's the same thing. So I, but I just saw Motorola and nobody else bid on it at all. So I was curious to see why it was just one, one bid and none of the other.
And I think we learned from our own era on previous projects, if you try to interface, trying to interface two different companies, it's, it's a nightmare.
Salesmen tell you it's gonna work, okay? Then the warranty, you start having warranty issues, you start having one blame the other and people are pointing fingers at each other because it's two different products, you fool them with two different reps. It, it, we have tried that when we built the department last term, we were on a budget and we spent millions of dollars, we started with nothing to build that department, and we did a lot of mix-match stuff. Every time we did it, it came back to haunt us. We ended up with some technical problems, we ended up with fights between vendors. So we learned our lesson that while we had to do what we had to do to get the PD up and running, we're now buying, we're following state contract, but we're buying the best equipment we can get because that'll last for seven years. And look, our guys are, you know, they're rough, you know, they out there tough, rough and tumble. So it, uh, what we buy is, is the best we can get for state contract and we are a Motorola department.
Okay, I know, cause I know, I know the fire department.
You can't compare, it's not apples to apples. We use our radios twenty-four seven. I mean, just the dispatch is different from fire department. How many fires do you got purchased? How many crashes?
And, and that's true, cause I, I, yeah, I got Kentwood and I don't, and I don't use this as much as y'all. Right.
On the phone, you know?
So I was just questioning the number, make sure that we were getting the best deal for our buck and, and I, cause I knew there was a cheaper alternative. And, but if you're saying that you need Motorola interface, which I, I think they work, but I, I get it, you wanna stay standard with one, but yeah. But I just didn't see other bids and, and to compare the bids with each other. So that's it, I'm done.
It's the ecosystem. You wanna keep the same ecosystem so that there's no issues there.
Same rep, same.
And it's fully understand, that's fully understandable.
Price ain't everything.
Yeah, you're right. Sometimes you get what you pay for.
We found that out. Any other discussion? Then I'd ask you to vote your machines. Thank you very much. Five B.
Introduction of Special Ordinance Number twenty-two-four twenty-two-five oh four, an ordinance amending the budget to carry over funds for the American, Akadina Crime Lab and setting for public hearing on December seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four.
This is our final payment to Bo Dewey. We got a payment plan, he let us have a payment plan, we put the crime lab on layaway. And this gets us out of layaway. So I'm, I'm excited about that this gets us paid. So do I have?
Saw it the other day, it is, it's gonna be nice.
Oh, it's gonna be really nice.
Yeah.
So moved.
So I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo and a second by Councilman Martin Lewis. Any discussion on this item? All good? Then please vote your machines. Thank you, Bo. Five C.
Introduction of Ordinance Number twenty-two-four thirty-three, an ordinance awarding contract to Ultimate Technologies for the prime camera infrastructure project phase two and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith and further setting for public hearing on December seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four.
This is our gift cameras from our governor Jeff Lane. Uh, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Councilwoman Dee Johnson-Reed and Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo. Questions or comments on this? Like I said, this is the next wave of crime cameras that we got two hundred fifty thousand dollars and we are adding additional cameras.
Are we using the same vendor?
Oh, yeah, everything's the same. Oh, wait, we're not.
Yeah, that's why I'm like, okay, so our ecosystem conversation we just had, yeah.
Motorola.
Cause I, I mean, I'm like, so what's the, why are we doing a different vendor?
Yeah.
It's, it's the same product, it's a different, uh, different vendor, uh, way cheaper.
Yeah, but the same product.
Yeah, same product, different vendor.
And way cheaper.
Same warranty?
Yes, everything, everything's gonna be. The exact same, it's just who's coming to install it.
But it's all Motorola.
The guy that, the guy that we're going with now, he actually used to be a programmer for Motorola itself on the cameras. So he knows everything, he knows these cameras inside and out.
Okay, so are we gonna be tracking? Cause now what you're doing is, you know, we gotta call different vendors based on the camera that's actually causing the problem.
So the system.
Right.
The system that we're, uh, we're going to monitor these cameras on is gonna be one system. But I, I have a map, I have a spreadsheet, uh, I think I did it a hundred times for the mayor.
Yep.
With all these locations that we have these cameras, um, and we know, we know whose cameras is what. And it's like, it looks like a lot of cameras, but I'm, I'm pretty, there's so much I could recite these locations in my sleep of where these cameras are.
Let us get more cameras. We only have, this is our last for a while. The, this, we made sure they were still Motorola, but the reason we said we would do this, cause we took bids and looked long and hard, we could get quite a few additional cameras by doing this. So we decided while it might be a little, it's still Motorola, while it might be a little bit of a pain, I, I don't know when I'm gonna add more cameras. My plan is in every year's budget to put, you know, a few more cameras. But we're not gonna get one point seven million dollars from Cleco again. I don't know that the governor's gonna be generous and give us two hundred fifty thousand dollars again. So after this big pop, the cameras are gonna slow down. Now, when we kinda feel that we fixed a crime area, the cameras can be moved. But on the flip side, I, I'm being realistic, I, I know that we, what, it's a living system, we need to keep adding to it. But anyway, the, the chief and all the staff, the administration, we talked about it and said, okay, we're still getting Motorola. It is a little bit of a shift, but we can get some more cameras. It lets us get additional cameras.
So, and I get that, okay, and that makes sense, but this smaller vend, I'm assuming it's a smaller vendor.
I think he's kinda starting out.
Yeah, so support, I mean, it's not just the actual selling or, or purchase of the camera, it's the actual support. So camera goes down, is this person gonna have the ability to respond quickly enough to get in there and do something about that camera? Cause that's the other part of it. It's not, it's the, the ability to make sure the support's there. Cause it'll be great, same, you know, cheaper price, but if the support's not there and you gotta pay, or you gotta wait too long for that person to be able to go out there and handle that camera, then you've kinda defeated the purpose.
So the, the company we're with now is out in New Orleans, uh, and since this project started two years ago, we started planning this. I think they started installing in January. We've had a lot of obstacles that we've had to overcome and issues that we had to hash out with this company. Uh, we were supposed to be finished with this in February, March, and we're in December and we're still there.
Right.
This, second, this, uh, this company that, up here, Ultimate Technologies, um, he actually did the cameras on the fire station. Uh, we put cameras on the fire stations outside facing around four to five.
Yep.
Fire stations.
Four to five.
He came, we brought him to the fire stations, he looked at him. Within a few days, he had his bid in on the state contract. Everything went through what it was supposed to go through. Um, he set it up, everything was installed for a week. They've been up for a couple of months now and we have not had one lick of problems.
That was our experiment, we said, okay, we'll try the.
We have, we have not had one issue with the cameras going down, the footage. Um, we dealing with cameras, right now we're dealing with cameras, you know, going down, trying to get them back up, uh, with this current company now. But we, uh, we have not had one problem with any of the fire station cameras since they've been installed.
Okay, and I, I say this only just because I came from the world of IT and when you deal with smaller vendors, they give you a cheaper price, but they, the support's not always there because they don't have the number of people that you need to go out there and swap out a camera as quickly, especially if we're not their only contract. If they're working, if he's working in other cities, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't do that, I'm just saying, be aware of the fact that you may run into an issue where it's, he can't get to us and services us quickly because he's servicing two or three other cities and he can't get back to us for thirty days. So just be aware of that when you deal with smaller vendors. I won't be here next year to say that again, so.
Actually, the vendor we're dealing with now, I'm actually texting with them right now because we have some cameras that are offline right now that I need back last week.
Right.
Um, and.
Yeah.
Maybe Monday. They're gonna, they're gonna be able to get here and get to them. So, I mean, that's.
Yeah, no, I get it, but with a smaller vendor, they say Monday, it might be Monday, January, you know, twenty-fifth or something. Just be, I'm just, I'm not saying don't do it, I'm just saying, just always be aware of the fact that smaller vendors, you run into that issue.
I really prefer not to deal with the vendor we're dealing with now. It's, it's been, um.
This is what it is.
Well, I mean, we, we do have, I mean, I don't know how, I mean, cause we haven't heard, and this is my first hearing that we're having issues with them, but we do have a termination clause in there. If you guys feel like they're not the right vendor, you gotta go back out to bid and terminate that contract with them. That's why we asked for a termination clause.
We, and we know that.
Yeah.
I, I, we're, we're there. I mean, the, the light's there. I mean, in the beginning, there was, you know, technical issues, and again, it's software, it's IT. You're gonna have issues getting things up and things just not working right and just, you know, putting the camera on a pole and it not be in the right pole and having to go and move it and like, I mean, issues like that, uh, we've been have, we had. I think we're over that now and, you know, I'm in direct contact with Cleco. So this next phase, I know that, that Cleco rep is gonna come ride with me and we're gonna go to these locations and he's gonna say, yes, that we can do this pole. No, we can't do this pole. So we're not installing stuff on a pole that they can't use or can't connect to. Uh, some poles were not stable enough for Cox to actually climb up to hook the, to drop the, the internet too. So then we have to go and move the box. We'll get Cleco to disconnect the power, then move the box, then move the camera, you've gotta go back in, hook the power up, then they gotta go back and connect the camera back, then Cox has to come back, but now.
But we're through all of it.
We, we, we learn, we, we learn.
Yeah.
How to do better.
Okay.
That's what, and that's what we're gonna do. That's a lot of the issues we had, um, and again, IT, so.
But the bulk of our cameras are up and running. We have, uh, how many left to put up? About.
I have three more locations to go and map out. Uh, I just gotta get with Cleco. Um, that's the three we kinda moved until, uh, this next phase. And I wanna say maybe, I'd say probably about ten camera locations. And they are, right now they are programming our twenty-five LPRs, uh, which have already been mapped out. The box is already up, the power's already connected, so they're programming them, so they just gotta go hang them up.
And it was a big, I mean, you know, we spent a lot of money. I mean, it's a, it's a big system, so.
I think, I mean, this, I know this company does a lot of work with Baton Rouge that we're with now, but I think we're probably the only ones that came to them with a hundred and twenty-five locations and twenty-five, you know, I think Baton Rouge probably did it.
Yeah, everybody else did it in small. Forty to fifty at a time. So we mapped out.
Project they've ever done, and so it's just a learning experience for everybody.
So you're kinda making my point? Look at what problems we're having with the big company, think about that for your small company. That's all. But thank you, I appreciate the explanation.
So for the investment we're making, if you can deprive him, how many units do, are we gonna see, you know, reusing locally?
So, uh, the first phase is.
I mean, total, you don't have to tell me, I'll break it all down, but.
A hundred and twenty-five locations, we're four cameras at each location, so about five hundred, five hundred cameras total throughout the city.
So it's four cameras at each location?
Yeah, when I've said there's a hundred and twenty-five locations, there's four cameras at each location.
Okay, so.
Yeah, it's a three sixty camera inside those domes. So it's four cameras in there that do a three sixty view. Uh, then we're gonna have the twenty-five LPRs to this one. And I think we're looking at an additional thirty, uh, with this second phase.
Thirty times four?
Yeah, so another hundred and twenty cameras.
Wow.
And I could tell you that I actually went back and since these cameras started coming up in January, every homicide we've had this year, these cameras have helped in some way on every single one.
So we do have eyes in the sky.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, we use it cameras pursuits, wrecks, I mean, burglaries, thefts. I mean, we use it for a lot. I mean, just, you know, human life is obviously the priority, so your homicides, um, I mean, they've helped in everyone. Of tracking down vehicles, tracking down people and helped solve a majority, probably ninety, ninety-five percent of our homicides this year. They have helped in some type of way of solving them.
It's a good number.
So do we have locations for all the third, the, the thirty that we have now? Do we have all thirty locations?
For the most part, we got a few to work out, we got a few to work out.
So, I mean, I know, excuse me, I know I've given you some.
Yes.
But, um, if there's some, if you have some available, I mean, I have a couple of other locations.
Right, well, we only have thirty more and we got a lot of districts and everybody's kinda requested. So I pretty well think they, they kinda all spoken for, for the most part.
We also have, so, uh, with this system that we're gonna use to monitor, um, I know all the city buildings, parks that have cameras, we're gonna put a device on their camera system that's already there and we will be able to tie our system into.
Yeah, that's the next, the next phase.
Seer Gates, uh, any, uh, we're the Pepperplex. And we'll be able to monitor those cameras which are outside too. So like west end area, west end park, uh, Seer Gates, Pepperplex. Um, so any city building that has cameras on it, we're going to tie into. And these, with this company, uh, businesses and residents will also have to, the option to purchase this same device to hook to their camera system, um, and to, obviously the outside cameras, but that we have access to monitor their outside cameras on their residents if they choose to. The, the schools we're going with as well, we'll be able to monitor the outside of schools twenty-four seven. The inside cameras will, we'll be able to access if there is an incident at the school. So when our dispatch puts in that address, like niche thirteen oh one, East Hamilton, when they put in that address, the dispatch, the crime center, the offices in their units, their cameras will pop up on their screen and they can watch live what's going on in the school. If there's a threat, God forbid, or anything like that happening in the school.
It's pretty powerful.
Get on it.
So, uh, do we have our real-time monitoring, like our person watching these cameras right now?
She, she is, uh, we have one, um, obviously she can't work around the clock. Um, but we do, our patrol lieutenants do have access to the cameras where they can go and pull them up. So in the middle of the night, they can pull them up. Um, I have access, I can access them from my house. Lieutenant Landry, Sergeant Bro and the analysts, we can all access them from our house. So if it's important to call us in the middle, we'll probably be here anyway, but they can call us in the middle of the night, I can pull my laptop out, pull the cameras up and download the video. Um, they could also send us requests, whatever they need. Um, I think over the la, the four-day holiday, um, all day Friday, Saturday and Sunday, I was pulling video from my house for them for things that were happening, so.
Okay.
And we also, uh, in this budget, will be hiring somebody else.
I was gonna say, is the plan still to make sure it's twenty-four seven monitoring?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Yep, working through that right now.
Excellent.
And the sys, the sys, the system, not only the schools, but the system we're gonna have, um, if there's, um, something that happens and when dispatch puts that address in, that system will pop up the four or five closest cameras to that address and pop them up on the responding officer screens and they'll have, be able to backtrack fifteen minutes and watch fifteen minutes prior, you know, any vehicles leaving, people leaving, uh, our dispatch will have the same thing where they can see real-time what's going on before they get there.
Okay, excellent.
The company prior to put the first cameras up, did they bid the project?
The, uh.
The original contractor?
Yes, that was, uh, with them and, uh, I think it was only two for that one, the AIC out of, uh, Broussard and, um, Active Solutions.
Yeah.
That's who did the original?
Yeah, Active Solutions.
Yep.
Yep. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Yes.
Someone asked me recently if you guys use the cameras to kinda monitor traffic violations. I assume no, uh, because there's bigger things to watch for right now, but.
It would be nice.
Yeah, I mean, well, I don't know, we have our traffic cameras already that people cannot stand and I feel like the crime cameras are the crime.
Do, do we want seconds of that?
I, I think, I think, I think it'll work, it'll work different from a traffic camera because it's a third-party company and more of a civil violation as if I'm watching the camera and I would want to cite somebody, it comes more of a criminal. and I would want to cite somebody, it comes more of a criminal, a criminal citation or traffic citation, and that's when you're gonna get into the technicalities of, I wasn't driving.
Okay.
So if I pull somebody over in your vehicle, I can't write you a ticket if it's somebody else driving and they committed a violation. I have to write the violator that ticket who was actually driving, so it comes different when I see it as opposed to this third-party company and that's civil, however they write their, their contract.
Okay, good to know. Now I know how to answer that. Um, does anyone remember how much the little device is for residents or businesses to be able to have you guys tap into their cameras? I felt like we had a list before, but I just don't remember.
We did, we did.
I think the, the.
I didn't think the residents had to pay anything.
The demo y'all came.
Yeah, they have to buy the box, the little box.
The demo y'all came to is, is.
I don't think it's much money.
We're going with, that's.
Okay.
It's actually, so this one y'all demoed was not a Motorola company, they were a third-party company, so you're starting interfaces again. So we're actually going with the Motorola company. It's cheaper and it's Motorola to demo Motorola products.
Okay, so the list we have is wrong then?
If it's, if it's.
It's a different company.
We'll get you a new list.
Okay, sounds good. So if I'm not mistaken, they said that they would be able to pull video footage from someone's camera without going to their homes.
That's.
So they have to have a box in order to be able to do that?
Interface, right. They're gonna have to, a business can do that, or a residence can do that.
Well, I remember about the business, but I didn't remember them saying that about the residence, 'cause, I mean.
So I, I, I think there's options that the homeowner can choose, like, uh, the homeowner can pick and, like, choose what cameras we'll have access to, 'cause some homeowners have cameras inside their house and obviously, they don't want the police to have, or anybody outside their house to have access, so I think they can pick and choose and then what we can do with them, 'cause if I understand them right, the school, like, the schools and stuff, we can have access to your cameras, but only if something happens in your neighborhood or in the area of where you live. And then if you give us the option to actually download it or if we have to, you know, contact you, we'll have your contact information to say, hey, like, we see footage that captures something that we need for an investigation, you mind if we, you know, come, get the footage however we have to get it, you know, some type of way?
Okay.
Anybody else? Thank you. There's nothing further? Please vote your machines. Thank you. Five D.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty-two four thirty-four, an ordinance awarding contract to Motorola Solutions for Equipment and Communication Services for the New Iberia Police Department and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith and further setting for public hearing on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Bookmarkot and Councilman Marlewis, these are the radios. Uh, any discussion on this item? We kinda already had it.
Yeah, talked about it, yeah.
So, since we've kinda already had a discussion, uh, if I don't see anything else, yes.
When, when are we gonna have them installed, do you think? If we, everything's approved, when do you think the new radios will be active in, on the police force?
So, uh, actually recently, Lieutenant Landry, which is kind of our IT, he's our do-it, our do-everything guy.
Yep.
He does our IT, uh, he's kinda heading this, uh, he's over the real-time crime center, uh, thing. Uh, he actually just went through a training through Motorola where he can actually program radios himself, so if.
The other reason.
You wanna stick with Motorola?
Uh, he got all the.
That's a really good reason.
He got all the equipment in, so we could actually physically get the radios and he can go and program himself because I'm pretty sure that's an additional cost or if something happens to the radio where it needs to be reprogrammed, they, they normally charge.
Yeah, they keep, they're gonna swap the radio, but then they charge.
So the transition's gonna be relatively quick. I mean, you're saying, you, you made a statement that the other radio system was getting in bad shape and having some issues, so.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of maintenance, you know, it's wearing, it's like a cellphone, it's plastic, and so they drop, they, you know, run in, jumping fences, they fall off, um, fighting people on the ground, they get broken, the antennas break and it's small plastic pieces and I think that it's minimum five, six hundred dollars now to repair them.
This is the chief's. He gave me his because I gave up mine as a patrolman, so he doesn't have a radio.
And I have the assistant chief's radio, so our chief and our assistant chief don't have a radio right now.
So, so, so that, that's the point of my question. You better get the new ones here pretty soon. All right, I'm done.
All right, anything else? Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Five E.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty-two four thirty-five, an ordinance amending and reenacting section seventy-four, article three of the City of New Iberia Code of Ordinances related to excavations on public property and setting for public hearing on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
This is where we're trying to tighten up utility companies that come into town that we have not been strict enough on, didn't have the teeth in our ordinances, that tear up all of our utilities, tear up our sidewalks, come into town, so this is where we are trying to kinda take back control of some of that. Uh, but that's, that's what this ordinance is about.
Make a motion.
I got a motion by Councilman Dan Dahl and, uh, second by Mayor President Ricky Goslin. Any discussion?
I do.
Yes.
I do.
So do I.
Okay. So. Okay, good.
And, and, and tell me if this is, uh, non-Germane, but I, I got a real issue with all the AT&amp;T boxes I see around town open and destroyed all over our city. Is this gonna encompass this?
It can, it can.
Oh, that's why I like it too.
No, 'cause, I mean, I see them in there knocked down and the wires hanging out. They must not be working. They must not need them.
So this is, I've talked to a few AT&amp;T guys and they said that these, these boxes are, most of them are, are, are non-functional because of wifi now and the internet. So they just wide open, kids running around them, you can't cut grass around them, the city can't, I mean, and I mentioned it before, and every time you call AT&amp;T, nothing gets done.
I know.
So I'm asking if maybe we could restructure this to try to address this.
We can add that in there too. I don't have a problem with that, 'cause we need to deal with it, and I have been calling, but I haven't gotten any, anybody to come clean them up.
I'm, I don't know if adding is gonna make a difference, but it's worth the try.
Yeah, yeah, well, and we have, we have crews putting fiber in, hitting our utilities, we have people that break streets and don't come back, we have people that break sidewalks, they put the utilities in. I, it takes me a month of Sundays to investigate, you know, I'm not supposed to be using crime cameras to find out who, who jacked my, jacked my sidewalk, okay? Uh, so this, that's kinda the reason why we're doing this. Do I think we're gonna have to tweak it along the way, but I think it's important that we get something in place.
Mayor, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was kinda like, same line, people were calling me about them, um, I think it's, uh, come in and putting a fiber all over without even checking it. And, you know, years ago, I always said, and I think the mayor, you probably still do it around the city, is when the city goes on someone's property, at least put something on their door to let them know that the city's doing work on their property. Give them some respect, even though it's an easement, like, it's still their property that they take care of. And it's amazing to me that these people can come in, do utilities, and just come in your yard, tear it up, do whatever, and just leave. And they're getting paid by the, if I go do a job, I need to get a permit. But these people are getting, it's not like city doing work in your yard, you know, you're paying taxes for that service. These people come in, no response, not letting the homeowner know what they doing in the yard. And then it might start and it rains and leave, might not come back, might come back. I just don't understand how we can make ordinances and things, but we can't control these people coming in on our property and our easements. It's just amazing to me.
That's what this is, is long overdue.
What it does, if we do something, there's not really, I mean, what it does to them, just tell them not to do it, or they have a fine, or.
Well, there's a fine, but it's not enough.
That's not a fine.
But we can, we can up it.
Yeah, that was, I mean, my question was the same thing, why, why aren't we notifying residents and, and why is a fine just fifty bucks? That's not an incentive to do the right thing.
I don't disagree. Dan had the floor, but I agree with you.
I mean, fifty, I'll pay the fifty dollars to go tear up your yard, I mean.
Yeah. And leave.
I think we need to put a fine. I always said that, even, you know.
That's why it's here.
My turn comes.
Okay, sure.
You know, because it, it, we don't think, people, a lot of people like their yard neat, I like my yard neat, but someone come do work, I'm gonna let them do work. But, I mean, it's like, no, no consideration, and then you could charge the people to use the service who messed up your yard. It, it, I mean, I'm glad this is here, but I, I, the fine is not.
That's why it's here as an introduction for us to talk about it and to get in.
And we don't wanna run them off. We don't want them not to come to New Iberia, but they need to respect our citizens of New Iberia and the property that we have, and I believe this. I'm glad you brought that to the council, but we need to make it where.
It's a start.
Fifty dollars is not, I might wanna add another zero to it.
Yeah.
And maybe we will. That's why, that's why it comes here. Uh, uh, it's not a dictatorship, but I, you know, I wanna have something that I can send, you know, Rusty. I can send my officer that does, we have one officer that seems to be the problem, you know, we sent him for all of these kinda ordinance problems. I wanna be able to send him to say, you know, fine him, hook him, do whatever.
Why, it's simple, it's like, I don't know if y'all still do it, I, I recommend that years ago when I was up here about, make them go to the property owner and put something on their door, we'll be here. Just to let them know. That goes a long way. I mean, I think we should implement that they have to notify the homeowner when they own their property.
Unless they had it in, we put that in place our first term, last term, and it's worked. Public Works goes with a hanger, I don't have all those complaints and mystery calls of what your crews doing.
Yeah.
So it does work.
Yeah.
I mean, we proved that.
Thank you.
Okay, I think you and X.
Yeah. Yeah, so this morning, I was on Lombard Street and there was a contractor out there, they had not notified the homeowner, but they were blocking like two driveways with all the work that they were doing, and so I couldn't turn in, the person couldn't back out, and so I'm literally going, park my car in the middle of the street, go ask the guy, can you move this, this particular vehicle? I mean, they're like, well, he's like, what are they doing? I don't even know why they're here on the street. I mean, it's just, it's disruption for the homeowners and it would be great if they notified them, but when they don't do the right thing, 'cause I mean, I get complaints all the time about contractor came, dug a hole in my yard, left a hole, and I'm eighty-four years old, I, I can't go and fill in this hole. Um, and then public work has to go up, try and fill it in for the, the resident. We need, we need those guys to be held accountable for what they're doing. Especially the ones that we, especially ones we have franchise agreements with. Come on now, they should do a better job than that.
Agreed. Yes, sir.
So my concern is in the same line of them, but I'm going back to the one I'm getting the most complaints about, the AT&amp;T boxes. I think I can go around town, Freddie, and take pictures in my phone when I'm on space.
No, there's.
I think we need to put.
Fifteen on downtown that are messed up.
If there's a utility box exposed or open, we need to verify and put it on a list and send, and come up with a fine, that if they don't close the box, whether it's working or not, in our city limits, that they're gonna get fined. I mean, it's a hazard.
I think we can do that inside of this ordinance?
I think it's a hazard. I mean, our utility, our public works are trying to cut around them, and as soon as we damage it, they're gonna blame us, so I think there's a lot of benefits to making them close these boxes up. Beautification is one. You try, we're trying to clean our streets, pick up litter, we got utility boxes wide open, with wires hanging out. You know, I just, it's annoying, but I, I'd like to put something in that ordinance to accomplish that.
All right.
Mayor, my question was simple, they're, they're non-functional, obviously, right?
Not to be the way they look.
But, but the question is, who, who opens them? Is it, is it people going to get copper out of them or?
I think they're getting hit. Well, the wires are so fine, you're not gonna get any copper, okay?
Right.
There's, there's nothing there, but they're, they get knocked over or damaged and then I guess because they aren't functioning, they just laying there as a mess. But I don't think anybody's trying to get the copper because there's not enough in it, the wires are so fine, I mean, you couldn't even strip it or melt it to get the copper. But, uh, what I find is they just damaged, you can see that, you know, in instances, cars have hit them, uh, on corners and they just laying there, you know.
That's what I'm thinking. What, not only that, 'cause I, I know they got one on the corner of, um, Lombard and, um, Anderson, right in front of the Kohler Shop. I see that all the time, right? And I thought AT&amp;T opened it to come back and water, to discontinue whatever they do.
Some of them are, some of them are open by AT&amp;T.
A lot of, that's what I'm saying.
All in over.
Right, that's, I feel like most of them are open. That's the point I'm getting at. I, 'cause most of them, if you run into most of them, you're gonna hit their pole.
Yeah.
So, uh, most of them seem like they're open, that's why I asked who's opening them. Is it people going to have the copper, or is it actually the, um, provider? Is it AT&amp;T opening them? And if they're opening them, we definitely need to go after them. I say go after them, it's hard to go after big business.
Like I said, I don't care if they function or not, close them.
Yeah.
Close them up.
Or remove them.
Remove them.
Oh, I got two.
Safety is for kids.
There, there's some, there's these big old, I don't know what it is, I'm not electric, it's this big old thing that come off the wire. And everybody who sees it say, oh, call Cleco, 'cause it's a, but it is obviously cable or something, and you call Cox and they just, they stay there forever too, you know? And it, it's just, it, it looks bad, I feel like it's dangerous, you know, a kid, we always trying to, I'm saying we, 'cause we did that, always trying to climb something, you know, so that, I mean, that's all, that's all part of this, right, is what we do. Look like that's the hardest people to deal with, all utility companies.
In some ways.
Do what they want.
It's the subcontractors, it's not, it's the people that the utility companies hire. They'll come in, somebody will get a contract, I, I don't know how they did that out, it, uh, it's not public, it's private, you know, contractors, but they'll bid it out and they'll just send a crew in and you got twenty guys tearing up the whole town to get some fiber in or whatever, and they just bouncing around to see how fast they can do it. So they're not from here, they don't have any skin in the game, and they just moving on to the next community, but that's part of the, part of the issue. But again, they work for our utility providers, that's, you know, that's the key.
We need to get them to put this, whatever ordinance issues that we've come up with, things that we want in there, we need to get them to put that in their contracts with their contractors because if not, they're gonna continue doing the same thing. And AT&amp;T is so big, they can pay a five hundred dollar fine, they won't even think twice about it.
This one really is mostly streets, you know. One of the things, this one, this is a start, but this one mostly, the mindset at the time, which I know we have other issues, was we were beginning to have a lot of sidewalks and a lot of our new streets, and we're about to spend seventeen point one million again, I, I, we don't need to add to that, that our streets are getting. So most of this, you know, not all, but most of it's focused on streets and.
We're gonna add easements to it, huh?
Yeah, yeah, so what we're gonna do is figure out, it might not be this ordinance, Laney's gonna look at where it belongs, and then I'll come back to you, uh, and we'll just keep working on it, I mean.
You're right, 'cause we can only govern within the public right of way.
Yeah.
'Cause some of those boxes may be on private property. It shouldn't be, but, you know, you're right, exactly right.
Yeah, so we'll just have to look at that again, so we can, uh, I mean, this obviously needs some work. We talked about the fine increasing, uh, you know, we have a choice, we can leave it as the introduction, we can bring it back, we can, uh, you know, we can approve it as an introduction and then go work on it some more, uh, you know, but that's what I need, is some feedback, uh.
I think.
Yeah, sure.
So I think that, uh, from what I'm hearing from my fellow colleagues on the council, I think there's a lot more work to massage through this thing. I, I'd like to approve it as an introduction and get some more work done on it and come back and let's revisit it again, if that's okay with the council.
Jeff, if we change it drastically, do we, do we repeat the whole system or?
Yeah, I mean, we really have to, you know, we can fine-tune it a little bit, you know, between the first public hearing and the eventual adoption, you know, but really, you have to be talking about the same basic thing both times.
I know, I'm wondering if we're not going too far.
I think, I think we're, we're talking about putting other stuff in here, 'cause, yeah.
I, I think we oughta just not vote on this and.
Yeah.
We'll, I'll hit the restart button.
That's my suggestion.
I think we're changing it too much.
I'm all for that.
And then if everybody can kinda contribute, you know, the things they wanna add to it.
Yeah, yeah.
So we can have, do that one time.
Yeah, yeah.
Instead of having two ordinances.
So we would just defer it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think with, you know, 'cause that's my fault, with all of this discussion, let's back up and get it right.
So you don't think we're gonna add easements?
Well, we're gonna start adding the AT&amp;T boxes, we're gonna start adding.
I'm just saying easements, I mean.
Well, I mean, you got public rights away, which is what an easement is, but if you're talking about a private.
Well, that's not.
Easement.
That's not, we have nothing to do with private.
Well.
You might have paid them a hundred bucks to put that thing there.
Well, but, you know, a lot of, a lot of utilities that run along the sides of streets are gonna be outside of the public street.
I know.
In private property. You know, and I don't think we're really governing that, and we, we're. We're really trying to worry about people wrecking our stuff.
That's exactly right.
That's really what this focus is on.
And cleaning up what's not being utilized anymore.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's the add, so I think, that's why I asked you from the beginning, I think we've gotten a little, a little off.
I think we have.
I think it's a good discussion and I think we're gonna head in a better direction, but, you know.
Yeah, I think, I also think that we can add some things, but maybe not everything we discussed, but I think we can fine-tune it, I really do.
So if we defer it, I think that'd be a good idea, and we have no deadline on this, you know, so.
I mean, this is self-generated, that saw a problem and said, okay, let's start putting something together. So if y'all don't mind, I would, I, I needed the discussion, but now I have a.
I'll make a motion to defer.
You know, a better idea where we head.
Did the ordinance committee kinda review this at the last meeting? I mean, I wasn't able to make it, so I wasn't sure.
I wasn't either. I had to go, uh, and tend to something else that came up.
Okay.
So I think we have some more work to do.
Yeah, I agree.
Motion to defer. A motion by Director Mayor President Ricky Goslin to defer, and a second by Councilman Bookmarkot. Any discussion on that? We're gonna bring it back up, so I don't think we'll just, we don't have to have a date of when we bring them back. I didn't think so.
Without date.
Yeah, so.
Give it to the next council.
Yeah, if there's no other discussion, please vote your machine.
That's the first one I hear like that.
That's pretty funny. Well, we really, we have one meeting left to get, so that's pretty funny. Okay, we kicked the can. Hey, that's the first time we haven't kicked the can down the road. We have addressed stuff for eight years and I don't think we've ever kicked the can. That's funny. All right, I'm clerk.
Matt, Matt Galata to discuss dilapidated and dangerous conditions of properties at the following locations. Um, twelve nineteen James Street, seven thirteen Toriak Street, one ten Reynolds Street, five oh seven Silver Street, two oh two North Chestnut Street, and two twenty-five Horton. two oh two North Chestnut Street, and two twenty-five Horton Street.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, so this is the third batch for this year of this council. And, um, I guess we'll start off with Jane, two, twelve nineteen Jane, this has a tree falling through it. It's a giant eyesore on one of our main thoroughfares, so a lot of attention on this one. I don't know the age of the house, but it looks worse for wear.
And the, the owners are not responding?
Activity on response whatsoever, yet, so we'll see.
That's awful, yeah.
Yep.
It needs to go.
Brooke, that's your district.
Well, until January.
Actually, no, yeah, this is not, it was in Brooks.
Yeah, but it doesn't switch over till January, right, like officially?
No, it already did.
It's already in place.
Okay.
Switched, yeah.
Before this election, they switched.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is it hers or five?
It's not, it's two.
It's in two?
It's in District two.
Okay, cool.
Yes, so this, we're, we're in this batch, we'll have two for Marlowe.
Oh, that's right, because we changed the border, the, yeah, you have that, what used to be mine is now yours, yeah.
He gained a, a, a good many of, of Brooks.
Correct.
So, and this is the worst one.
And part of mine, North Landry Drive.
I gained a great deal of.
Yeah.
Yeah, everything shifted, yeah.
Yeah. So that's twelve nineteen Jane, this is seven thirteen Toriak. This one is interesting, because we had a demo permit purchased two or three years ago, and they stopped demoing it.
Yep.
We, we got them to pull a demo permit.
Started and ran away.
Yep.
That was a mobile home, right?
No, that's a house.
It's a house.
That's a house. I met with them out there because I had a grass complaint two or three years ago, and they were hustling, and then they disappeared.
I remember.
Uh, this is gonna be one ten Reynolds. Similar situation here, however, the homeowner tried to remodel it, and he is MIA. So that was two years ago he pulled that permit. Uh, it still had power recently, so we had to yank power off the wall. If you see on one of the pictures, the service was falling off of the wall, you can see in that picture the new lumber, which some of that was not done right, so, um, I don't, I don't know, maybe the next picture will have the service hanging off the wall. Maybe not.
So one ten Reynolds, I know somebody connected with that, I could, could call.
Surprised Cleco didn't see the service, because it was dangerous. But thought I had a shot of that. Um, next one would be five oh seven Silver. I think our last batch had a silver.
Yeah, it did.
We did.
It did.
Five nineteen. Um, this one is about the same, it's a big house, but it is pretty bombed out. So.
Wow.
I think it had a fire on one side of it.
Yeah.
And on to two oh two North Chestnut. This is the worst one, I think, it's even worse than, uh, Toriak, uh, in this batch.
Wow.
So that was a long time coming. That one's been on the list for a few years. There it is. Whole, whole thing's burned out. And the last one is two twenty-five Horton's, which is a hidden house. I don't think many people knew about this house, because I didn't, until I realized a guy was living in it.
Wow.
Which is hard to believe. Uh, a citizen in that area turned me on to him living there, and she was like, we gotta get him out. So she found him a pla, a spot to live, and we condemned it, and it's a good thing, because I didn't want to walk in it. It's pretty bad. So.
So that'll be our next ones coming, right?
That's it.
Good. And we do this because every once in a while, we get an owner to see it and take care of it, uh, at least gives them a final opportunity before the system starts.
Oh, congressional.
Good.
And I tried to pick the worst ones, so that.
That's what I want.
Get to the sore spots.
Yeah.
Talking about that is, oh, this way in the beginning, like on Elm Street list.
Yes, but that is in the grant system.
Something going on, some of the old, old, I mean, twelve years old.
A lot of those are in the grant that we're waiting on from the state.
Yeah, I was wondering, because they calling me left and right, and, uh, it's hard to get an answer.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
We have.
So y'all.
I'm in the same boat.
Y'all catching up a little bit?
Yeah, we're, they're in the process of, you know, I don't know where the money is, what's the, you know, I don't know the correct stance on that, but it is in the process of that first batch of demo grant, so.
Thank you.
Matt, I think one of mine on Lombard Street is in the grant, because it was burned out.
Yes, six fourteen.
Yeah, but there's two on St. Jude that I put on, like, when I first got on the council. Uh, on St. Jude, it's right there at the corner of St. Jude and Fields Street. There, I mean, at, at four twelve, maybe something like the four twelve, four sixteen, there's two, they're right next to each other.
Oh, yes, two white houses.
Yes, they are in deplorable condition, they need to come down. I mean, it's just such an eyesore, and they've been, I, I asked many times to have them, you know, make sure it's on the list, but.
It is on the list, they're both on the list, unfortunately, what was the one on yours? Um, Toriak, no, that's two. Uh, you're on Chestnut, so North Chestnut.
Well, that probably beats it, yeah, but.
It was a little worse, but I, I would say there's about ten more, maybe not that age group that it has been on the list, but, you know, we have, I stack things in priorities, you know, mid, low, high, you know, and you have about ten more of that stature.
Exactly.
It's just hard to pick which one on this. We have a new, the new council actually will have a, you know, we've, we've done batches of six, so we got eighteen that we have tackled.
Right.
Some of which this year have been remedied. Seven oh four school, two or three have gotten demo permits and have started their process. Um, but the next council will have, I think we're gonna approach it a little different.
Okay.
So we may be able to lump in more work.
Okay, that's good.
Because it is, it's more work for, for us, you know, so we'll give it a shot and see what.
Okay.
Hopefully, we can surpass eighteen next year.
That'd be great.
You know.
Because that list is long.
The demo grant is around thirty properties?
Thirty-nine for the first batch and then sixteen for the second batch, so not as many people came forward for the second.
We just didn't realize, I mean, we still need to do it that way because of the money, but I never dreamed, and I'm not complaining, but all of our money from the state, our capital outlay has been very slow coming, our, these grants are good, but they've been slow coming, so some of this has clogged the system up of those houses that are in a grant. We don't want to take them out, because I won't have the money to do others, but it is, that has moved much slower than I ever thought it would.
Yeah, so thirty-nine in the first batch of the demo, sixteen in the second. As of just now, I walked from up, from upstairs, I have a hundred and seventy-six total, of which I put about fifty in the past three months on there.
Yes, no, because you and I, you came to the office with the whole stack and we kind of went through the whole stack.
That was about eighty.
That was eighty.
Ninety.
And maybe ninety, and we said, let's pick the worst out of these ninety, spread it out as we do with everything else through each district, and see what we can do, but it's, it's a, it's a daunting task, it's a lot of houses.
Yeah.
And there's more. So if you know anybody that knows, speaking to the people at home, call us and let us know.
But, but, yeah, realistically, if somebody comes up and says they want a demo, we looking two years out probably?
If somebody says they want a demo.
I mean, if they come, you know, they need a property, they need to get demoed.
With a grant situation? Well, yeah, it's, it's at two years right now, I think.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
No, we had a year with the grant.
I know, but if you wanted one done.
Oh, like, in other words, if you turned a house in, you're trying to figure out.
Yeah, I'm just, when people ask me how long it's gonna take me to demo.
Person right now turns another house in.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yes, well.
It's, it's, I mean, we have a hundred and.
Seventy-six.
And seventy-six ahead of them.
Right, so I just don't want to deter somebody saying, look, you know, yeah, we can get it done, you number one seventy-seven in line, so you just be patient, we can get it done.
Well, one seventy-six minus forty-five, which is the whole demo batches.
Yeah.
And now we're gonna have a different approach.
Yeah, and we're trying to speed it up, in other words, we have, hopefully, next year is gonna be a, a little bit of experiment to try to get, you know, like this year, we got eighteen, okay? We got eighteen, we're waiting on the forty-something with the demo package. So next year, the demo package will hit for sure, so that's gonna jump us, and we'll at least get those off the list. If Matt can keep doing this, and we keep bringing them in small batches, but more often, at least we begin to move.
So what I'm seeing is that the demo project is becoming a full-time job for somebody, almost.
I don't know, now that we got our new compliance guy.
We hired a compliance officer, a part-time person, and I think that he's gonna be really busy, but it's gonna help. It's gonna help that, you know.
I've already seen some relief, which is why I've added a few in the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I'm done.
Yes, sir.
Matt, one question about, and for the public's interest, that burn house on Lombard on Fields Street, has been there about three years now. We talked about it, uh, last week, you and I, the burn house on the corner of, um, well, it's not on the corner, it's the first house off the corner of, um, Ambassador LaMell and Lombard. I'm sorry, Fields Street.
No, no, he said Hopkins, it's Hopkins, right by Hung's.
Seven twenty-two Hopkins?
Yeah.
Yes, that was on our last batch, our second batch.
Is it in the process, is what I'm asking?
Yep. All those six are, yep.
Okay, and speaking of process, Rick, what you, what you asked basically is, so if it, the, the process we have, if somebody turns it into us, and we turn it into the city, we get it out to the public, it don't have to be two years if the owner comes up and says, hey.
That's why we do this. The point of doing more of these is.
Two weeks, right.
Every once in a while, we have a big.
Everybody, everybody that asks is, well, how soon can you get it, how soon you, well, it just depends.
It's mostly, like you said, it's mostly the people complaining about it.
Right.
But it just depends, and we gotta tell them it just depends, because we can't tell them they're number one seventy-seven.
And the property owner could deal with it. Every once in a while, we've had some victories, and I think, putting, the more we put up there, and the more we notify people, and the more they see their property, possibly it's a, it's a victory.
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
Because they are gonna get charged on their taxes, we should always say that too.
Yes.
Okay, um, so not to add to Matt's workload, but, um, do you remember the last meeting I asked, could we go over the, um, the law that we got approved at the state level about junk cars?
Yes, yes.
Can we please make sure it's on the agenda for the next meeting?
Will be the next meeting.
Because we gotta get these junk cars out of these yards, they're everywhere, and people are complaining about having these junk cars next door to them. So we could, you know, maybe our compliance guy can kind of start tagging some of these cars and getting rid of them.
Without a doubt.
That would be another help to kind of clean up our community.
You know, we've, we've been tagging cars.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know the numbers right now.
We, we, we need to just make sure we introduce them.
And the rules have changed.
Yeah, that the rules have changed, we actually can, we can actually tag more cars than we've been able to tag in the past, and people who have them like sitting in their front yard or side yard, they need to know the rules have changed. It has to be in your backyard, near your fence, covered, so that it's not an eyesore. And so we need to make sure that that gets, you know, told to the public, so when you guys are out there tagging them, you're not getting these people who are all upset, you know.
They usually never get upset, because it's, we, I try and talk to them before I tag it.
Good.
So I've towed four or five this year.
Okay.
But I've tagged more than twenty.
Yeah.
Maybe thirty.
Yeah.
So it gets the message out when you tag a vehicle.
Yeah, I mean, I have people calling me about some on side streets, some sitting in the front, why is this car still here? I'm like, okay, we're, we're doing the best we can, but, yeah, okay, all right.
Mayor, and maybe Jeff can ask. It's a little off-kilter, but does the law that changed concerning adjudicated property affect these houses that we bringing on a demolition list in any way? Didn't the state, state change the law about adjudicated property and redemption time or something, did that affect?
What, with the, um, there's a new state law, that they changed how adjudicated properties are handled. In the past, there was a sheriff sale, you know, with like a foreclosure where they sold them. Now, there's gonna be a lien that can be foreclosed on later. Um, so it's a different way to approach adjudicated properties. It's not gonna change the fact that we've got a whole bunch of them that are already adjudicated and we need to get rid of.
Five hundred and eighty-eight.
And, and some of these things are adjudicated properties. You know, some of the ones that come up on our demo list are things that have already gone through adjudicated, you know, that we're not gonna get that money back. They're already on the list because nobody paid the basic property taxes on them, so, yeah, um, I, I don't think, I don't think it's gonna really affect what we do with demolitions.
Okay.
No, I don't think it will, um, because it's not gonna give value to these properties in any way, which is really the, the, the solution. What we, what we need to do tonight, I guess, is fix a, a hearing date for these things, right? And I'd like to have a couple of months to do that, because y'all just gave me seventeen more, one block at a time, things to check out, along with these. But a couple of months to get the letters out, because the mail is so slow and so on and so forth. And then we appoint McKinley James, I guess, to represent any absentees that we have. Um, and we'll have some, because, um, we usually do. And he does a good job with that, and he, he accounts, you know, to us and sends us reports and bills and all that, so. Um, so I think the action for tonight, you know, we discussed these, but we need to set a date for the public hearing, a couple of months down the road, right? And then, no?
But it was declare them dilapidated, yada, 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 and set a public hearing.
At, at a future meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when's the public hearing gonna be?
Next meeting?
No, we can't do it in one month.
I think you do your part first and then give us the, like, ownership, so that we know who to notify.
Okay, so this is just coming attractions?
Yeah, yeah. What we're trying to do is more coming attractions, because we've had some success with that. It also shows the community that we're, and the council that we're picking, picking the next batch of houses.
Okay, great, great.
That's all this is, but.
Okay, then I'll, then I'll work these up, I'll work these up and give you the owners.
Right.
And then maybe if anybody knows any of these people, you know, I know at least one of them.
Our new idea of we're trying to.
I know at least one of them, um, I think Reynolds Street, they're trying to sell. They got some issues, but they're trying to sell it, um, okay.
Good, well, there's no action to take, it's just coming attractions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay. Councilman's remarks? I'll start with Dan.
Mayor, we have an, um, in my district is, you know, has a lot of pine trees, those pine eaters are killing us. Um, I'm telling people, you cannot rake them again into the sewer, that's worse than leaves.
Because they can enter the drainage.
Okay, so if they pile them up next to the garbage cans, not in bags, because they haven't, will the garbage pelican pick them up that way?
I don't know, they pick up limbs that way, and they're not bagged or anything, I, I don't know.
I know leaves are different, because they, they, people have no problem putting leaves, because it's not hard to do. Pine eaters, some reason, it's hard, I don't do, but it's hard to get in a bag or whatever. If they just pile them up next to the garbage cans, will they pick them up?
I don't know, I'm gonna have to ask.
Because pine eaters is worse than leaves, they don't flow, they in them, they're, they're like a dam. they're like a dam.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, some reason, District Six, you know, we have a lot of pine trees in District Six, and it's becoming an issue, um, that rained not too long ago, I was, my kids live in that district, my family lives in the district, a couple of times I went, and I had to get, get out there with a rake and just, I didn't pick them up, I just pulled them in the street, but they just really, it's not good for drainage, but I didn't know if they piled them by the garbage cans, if they would pick them up without bagging them.
I'll ask, that, you know, that's, that, I don't think our contract covered that one, but I'll ask.
But they could pick up, I mean.
You pick up the limbs and everything else, so maybe.
Yeah, I was just wondering.
I'll give it a shot.
Because, um, it would make a difference, especially coming into this time of the year with everything, um, you know.
If they could get them in the can, then they'd pick them up.
Look, some people believe that, and we, we went over this how many times, you put all that in a can, they'll pick it up, some people believe it should not be with the garbage.
It all ends up in the same place.
I'm just saying, we got, District Six is real funny about that, so, but, if you can actually, I would appreciate it, Mayor.
I'd be glad, all right.
Thank you, that's it, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just wanna remind everyone that this Saturday is the election day, so, um, there's a runoff for District Five and District Two, so we're asking everybody to please go out again and vote, uh, so we can pick the two council people that are gonna replace Councilman Luns and myself, um, and, um, there are also four amendments on the ballot, please, please, please read those very carefully, if you are unsure of how to vote on those amendments, feel free to reach out to me, either on Facebook, or you give me a call, you guys know my number, um, I'm happy to explain to you what's going on with those amendments, um, and then I would say that the downtown neighborhood association's having a meeting on December 11th, it's a community meeting, they're asking everybody in the downtown area to come out, because what they wanna talk about is, how do we actually[1485.04]